I know. Sounds of the...
Mayor Holland.
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 Like to call this meeting to order. It's a City of Palm Coast City Council Business Meeting. It is Tuesday, November 6, 2018. It is 6:00 PM. Please join me in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag.
(Inaudible). United States of America. To the Republic with its names, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Holland.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cuff.
Here.
Councilmember Lyons.
Here.
Councilmember Clufus and Councilmember Shipley are absent.
Great.
I mean, not great, but okay, thank you.
(Laughter).
They don't want to come now.
Okay. We'll now open it up to public participation. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on items not on the agenda? You have up to three minutes. Please state your name for the record, and your three minutes will begin.
Good evening, I'm Mayor Holland. How are you?
Good.
We're representing Alabaster Ministries. I'm Chaplain Carmen Caldwell. This is Patricia Ramsey. We just wanted to introduce to you, Alabaster Ministries is a ministry outreach for our family in transition flagger program for families that are actually homeless. And we have an outreach called Toys of Joy Outreach where we're giving teens $25 gift cards. This is the second year we've done that. Last year, we didn't have the opportunity to come here, but we wanted to come and make that known to the town and how in any way that you could assist us in getting the town a part of this. We wanted it to be a community outreach, so we're asking businesses and organizations to join us in this venture. So we're here tonight to talk about that and to introduce you to that. If you do see it out there, you know what we're about. We're meeting middle school and teenage children and, you know, Flagler County, Mantaza High School, Flagler High School, Benel Elementary, Aragonet. It's about right now about 120 families right now that are homeless in Flagler County, and that's our cry out to you. So your support and how we can do that and how you can come and join us with that, we appreciate some guidance there.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Next speaker.
My name is Celia Puglisi from Palm Coast, and I'm here just to give appreciation to one of our council ladies that is going to be retiring. I didn't know she was not going to be here today. I'm sorry, she's ill, but she has been very much for us, the residents, and I represent here just myself, Mr. Stephen Carr, and also a friend of mine that lives in Florida, by Florida Park Drive. She met with us and her husband when we asked for the problems in Florida Park Drive. She met with the neighbors. She was very kind, and thanks to her, I believe, the Florida Park Drive leak from the Holland Park into the sidewalk was resolved after two and a half days of hard work of our excellent Public Works Department. Also, she did ask, I asked her that there was a need for a rail for safety for the residents that walk on the sidewalk across the 21 fire station in Palm Coast Parkway, and in a couple of days, that rail was installed. I think she had to do with that. And also, I have to appreciate that she made the motion to table our ordinance for the tax for FPL in order to get other sources of funding and to give input to the residents for that type of tax. And we have a lot to appreciate. Sometimes we complain about representatives that we elect for office, but when they are doing good for the residents, for their quality of life, for their safety, and they here are pleased, we should appreciate. So this is to appreciate Mrs. Shipley because I don't know which is her last meeting, but I figured out this is the one of the last meetings. I hope whoever wears his shoes will remember the residents as well. Thank you.
Thank you for comments.
Can I give this to her?
Good evening.
My name is Jared Maxwell. I am the owner of Mad Dogs Flag Football at Palm Coast. We are here tonight to request helping guidance for our children's future in sports. As we all know, there is limited field space for youth sports in our great city, and that is our biggest concern. As many of you are aware, it takes countless days and hours on working on your craft to perfect your skills, and when pertaining to football, this cannot be achieved by limiting practices to only one or two days a week. What we are asking here for today, Council, is that we have unlimited field space for the first four weeks prior to our season starting, which is March 16. We plan on having our own training camps within the league specializing in position techniques to help maximize performance for both players and coaches. Having the extra field space and time will greatly benefit hundreds of kids who are eager to play football. There is currently another flag football league in town from Orlando called Mosquito Sports. I have personally coached in this league for 18 seasons. With Mosquito Sports being based out of Orlando, you can imagine that any issues that arise during game times are not quickly addressed by an absent owner. Numerous parents have paid their hard-earned money to this league only to be left without, with unanswered questions and disorganization as the season continues. Experiencing this myself and watching every parent's frustration each season led me to the conclusion that Palm Coast needs a locally-based and much more organized flag football league. And it is our passion to help kids in the community to learn and grow with the league that they can count on. Your consideration on this topic of the field time and accessibility is greatly appreciated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker. I know that most of you are here for the first time, but we have rules and procedures, so there's no clapping after public speaking. It's just a matter of keeping civil and order in the community. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Councilmembers and Mayor Holland. I'm here, RJ Daly. I'm a citizen of Palm Coast as well. With Jay, who just spoke, we've been coaching hundreds of hours every year with these children, and oftentimes, not only just providing them the adequate skills to be better football players, but to be better men and women, and hopefully stay within Palm Coast as they grow up and be contributing members to our communities. And over the past few seasons, we have noticed the lack of local leadership within the league, and Jay's addressed that. Also, in addition to just your support that we're asking for in terms of being maybe the priority league when you're, when we're dealing with out of, out of community, out of area businesses, so we're looking for the support there. Some of the other events that we do, Jay has a group of players that he constantly is providing guidance for on and off the football field. We have a group of coaches also within our, our sphere of coaches. We have provided numerous clinics with former pro players, college players, and we do all this for free for the kids, out of the passion for the game, the passion for the kids. And so, we would like to ask you for the continued support that we're already doing, but just to give us the priority as a locally-owned business and the support to keep, to keep those dollars within Palm Coast, number one. We have plans, Jay and I, my brother, we've talked about even just growing this to the event that, we've put in a lot of legwork. This wasn't just, let's just start the league. We've talked to different league organizers throughout the state. We've, we've made mention of maybe hosting leagues here eventually within Flagler County and Palm Coast. We know Palm Coast has some of the best and nicest facilities, so that's where we would need your partnership. Those leagues, as we know, anytime we do host athletic events, they can generate over the weekend anywhere from $2 to $5 million in economic impact, which would be vital for small businesses here within the city. There is a couple of events that we participate in currently in Orlando, and these bring teams from all over the state. This brings teams in from all over the southeast, and they compete over a course of the weekend, three days event. So, so the local impact to the economy, I think, is also something that should be taken into consideration. First and foremost, it's, it's what we're doing for the kids and being able to provide that guidance from making that leap from flag into tackle if so desired, but more importantly, just having a group of coaches who are passionate about teaching the kids properly. So we ask for your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you for comments. Next speaker.
Good evening, Board Members, Mayor. My name is Mr. Royce Pettis. I too am here on behalf of the flag football, for Mad Dogs Flag Football, and my portion is to remind you, in case you didn't already know, but to re-remind you on how important sports are to kids. Especially why flag football? Last year, flag football was the fastest-scoring sport when it comes to childrens of the age from two to 14, six, I'm sorry, six to 14. Outside of flag football, tackle football, baseball was the only other sport that had an increase of 3%. According to the CDC, the Central, Center for Disease and Control Prevention, child obesity has more than doubled in children in the past 30 years. In 2012, more than one-third of children were overweight or obese. One of the main reasons for this, this rise in obesity is the decline in children's physical fitness. On average, children average, on average, children's two to five spend approximately 25 and a half hours a week watching television. Children who, who are not exposed to physical activities during early school years have had some, had a hard, a hard time becoming physical in activities as they got older. Now, just some important facts on sports in itself and what it does for our kids and our community. The importance of sports. Sports boosts self-esteem. It builds character, develops teamwork and leadership skills, and also as, it's a natural stress reliever. It develops long-life health, healthy and, and life habits, lifestyle habits, and more than anything, it's fun. Why flag football instead of tackle football? Less expensive. These are the parents, by the way. It's less expensive. More playing time for the kids, less serious injuries, a more simple game to play, and it appeals to both male and female. Parents love it. And lastly, how does having football in the community help the community? It's an excellent outlet in helping kids remain healthy physically and mentally. Kids in sports are less likely to get in, into serious trouble. Kids in sports graduate high school at a higher rate than those who don't participate. So, Board Members, tonight, I'm also here advocating that this league is very important and very much needed in the community, and it would help the community out in more ways than one. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. I always wanted to thank Mr. Lyons for his service during this time and also for Ms. Shipley. And Ms. Shipley worked with us on Florida Park Drive as to try to resolve the tremendous traffic problem that's over there, over 8,000 cars a day being on that road. I look forward to meetings that where we can discuss traffic common methods that can possibly be used on Florida Park Drive, and I'd like to really thank Ms. Shipley for her work that she did for us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Robin McDonald, Palm Coast. Last week, I came to the workshop meeting, and I brought to the council's attention that the word on the street is that the city is now going to spend minimum of $20 million for a new Public Works Department or facility. They definitely need to have the facility upgraded, changed, repaired, corrected, whatever you need to do. But, $20 million between this administration and some of the previous administration in the last three years, between the building that we're standing in, Holland Park, and the Community Center, the City of Palm Coast has found a way to spend in excess of $20 million. So now, if we go for another $20 million for the Public Works Department, we're talking $40 million before you folks are out of office, possibly. $40 million in three years. Obviously, the Public Works Department has been in disrepair or need to be repaired long before this building was even being thought about, Holland Park, or any of the other major expenditures that the city continues to spend money on. So, I hope and pray that the city fathers will take the whole $20 million and say, "Okay, let's fix what we need to have fixed immediately." And then we can budget or have phases, just like we're doing with Holland Park. We're not doing Holland Park all in one shot. Let's fix what the Public Works Department needs because they do a phenomenal job, and they need to have the best equipment. We give the Fire Department the best equipment. We give the Sheriff's Department the best equipment. Let's give the Public Works Department the best equipment to work with. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker. Okay, I'll close public comment. To the first speaker, if you'll leave some information about your program to the clerk, she will provide it for us, to us, and we'll read more about it. As far as the Mad Dogs Group, it's the first I've heard about the flag football program, but I will say, I admire and respect every single parent and family member in this community that takes the time to volunteer to, to help the children of our community. So, whatever we can do, you have my commitment that we'll find a way to resolve what you're looking for us to do, and we will be in touch. So thank you for your efforts. Thank you. Mr. Carr and Ms. Puglisi, thank you so much for your comments in regards to Councilmember Shipley. She will be missed, and we really value and thank her leadership. And to Mr. McDonald, your, your points are taken, and we're taking these into consideration, and we appreciate your comments as well. So, okay, we'll now move to Agenda Item Number One, which is the approval of the Minutes of the City Council, October 16, 2018 Business Meeting, October 24, 2018 Special Community Workshop, 9:00 AM, October 24, 2018 Special Community Workshop, 6:00 PM, October 30, 2018 Workshop. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move of approval, second.
Moved in second, and all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number Two is a proclamation to designate November 14, 2018 as World Diabetes Day. I guess appropriate since we're talking about exercise. Council, Vice Mayor Cuff will be presenting. I'd ask everyone to please come up to the podium who will be receiving this proclamation.
Whereas, the American Diabetes Association estimates that nearly 30 million people in the United States are afflicted with or affected by diabetes, and another 86 million are still at risk for developing type 2 diabetes over the next decades. And whereas, having diabetes elevates the risk of heart disease, amputation, kidney failure, and blindness, causing serious hardship for families across not only our city, but also our country, state, county, state, and nation. And whereas, the International Diabetes Federation has established November 14, 2018 as World Diabetes Day to educate citizens on ways to predict if someone is at risk for the disease, to help recognize the symptoms of diabetes, and to follow suggestions for living a quality lifestyle while they endure the affliction. And whereas, the City of Palm Coast and Florida Hospital Flagler together recognize that the growing number of, number of diabetics in our own community and across America make a strong case for devoting more of our resources to help find a cure or support the change in lifestyle required. Whereas, Florida Hospital Flagler Foundation has formed the Diabetes Alliance. This alliance represents Flagler County schools, municipalities, healthcare resources, emergency care teams, corporate and private citizens dedicated to beating diabetes. The alliance will kick off the diabetes resource bags, lighting up the town blue on World Diabetes Day, and a logo campaign through Flagler County schools. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Palm Coast Mayor and City Council declare November 14, 2018 as World Diabetes Day in Palm Coast, and urge all residents and their families who struggle with the consequences of diabetes to choose to live their own quality of life and not have diabetes live it for them. Signed this sixth day of November, 2018, Mayor Melissa Holland.
Great.
Thank you. You get this?
I get this.
Oh, okay. We only have one copy.
We have copy machines, and we're good.
Thank you, Bob. Mayor and Councilman, you know, last year we came, and thank you for the proclamation. It's, it's a pleasure to continue our friendship and partnership with the City of Palm Coast. And last year, when I was here, if you remember, I said we were going to turn the town blue. So welcome to the Diabetes Alliance. I'm going to let Laura and, and someone else tell you about that. What I want to say is regardless of the statistics, I want to focus on what we have in our community. And what we have is 7,500 people who don't know they have diabetes or prediabetes, and those people can be cured. Those people can change lifestyle, healthy eating, exercise, and get tested. We at Florida Hospital Flagler have hired seven additional primary care physicians, so there's no excuse for sitting at home and not getting tested. So with that, I'm going to defer the rest of my comments, which I can go on and on, as you know, to Julie, who, and Julie is, is our Director of Inpatient Services. So Julie?
Hi. Thank you for the proclamation. My name is Julie Banker. As you said, I'm the Director of Inpatient Nursing. We see multiple patients that come into the hospital that don't even know that they have the diagnosis of diabetes. They find out when they're there that they have diabetes. We have support. We have a diabetic educator that will teach patients step one. Think about it, you're being admitted to a hospital, and you realize that you're coming out with, with, with a disease, and that's the scariest part. So we provide teaching for the patients. Nutrition is a big source, and exercise, eating right is, is key to be able to control it. And getting out to the community, and that's what we try to do, by offering diabetes education classes, and patients coming back and, you know, have success stories. It's so hard for a patient, think about it, that all of a sudden, they have to give themselves their own injections. That's, that's scary. So we teach that step by step until the patient is ready, and then they go home with either visiting nurses, or unfortunately, sometimes they go to a nursing home, but we provide that support and ongoing success so they can go back to the community and do well with their, with their diabetes, so.
Thank you.
Next, we have our spark plug and the engine that makes this run, Laura Gilvery.
I'm Laura Gilvery, and I've been called worse. So, I appreciate the opportunity, and thank you so much to the City of Palm Coast for the proclamation, but also for being an ally in the battle against this disease. So we formed the Diabetes Alliance this year, many of whom are in the room right now, but you are helping lead the way with an event on November 14, World Diabetes Day at the Community Center. Thank you for taking that step. It's significant, and the lives that you will impact in the community will not forget that. Chief Forte is here this evening. I, I just want to kind of give a little recognition to the additional allies that are on our team. So we have Chief Forte, who is also an ally. They are first responders, along with Chief Petito from the county, and we do also count City of Flagler Beach, as well as their emergency services are also an ally. We have the City of Flagler Beach alongside of us, Flagler County, or Florida Hospital Flagler is also an ally, Flagler County Schools. It's just amazing, the people who have come together and chosen to share their time and talent. Of course, Florida Hospital Foundation allowed us to form a committee and assign supporting teammates to bring this to the point that it's at now. In addition to that, we also have some private citizens, Melissa Mondello from Empower Fitness. I'm confident I'm going to miss some people, but Carrie from K&amp;M Mower. Rick Bellhummer in particular deserves recognition from the City of Flagler Beach, as he has really brought this to the next level, and the signs that you see here tonight were actually purchased by him on behalf of his father, who he lost to diabetes. All of these people have a story to tell, and we appreciate the opportunity and the forum to share it tonight with everybody here. As part of our contest to come up with a new logo for our alliance, we engaged Flagler County Schools, and a young man in particular really impressed us, so we brought him to impress you tonight. He did a public service announcement through FPC and shared a little bit about diabetes. He also spoke at the school board meeting, and I'd really like to give John Overton the mic here for a minute, so please welcome him.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I am John Overton. I am 16 years old, and I am a junior at Florida Palm Coast High School. I am also here this evening to tell you a little bit about myself, give you my story as a type 1 diabetic. I'm going on my ninth year, and I want to tell you a little bit about all that I'm involved in now as a type 1 diabetic. So, let's flashback nine years ago. It's actually the week of Thanksgiving. I was diagnosed the day after Thanksgiving. Leading up to Thanksgiving Day, I got really sick. My fingernails were turning gray. I was throwing up, and we were feeding me Gatorade, which wasn't helping because I was spiking my blood sugar, but anyway, that didn't help. The day of Thanksgiving, we ended up deciding that I needed to go to the hospital, so being, or it was the day after Thanksgiving. Being the day after Thanksgiving, of course, everybody's with their families, but we happened to have a friend of the family who was a doctor, and he had his practice open, so he took me over there. He then said that I needed to go to the hospital and immediately put me on oxygen. So I took the ambulance ride over to Children's Family in Atlanta, Georgia. I was actually out of town visiting family, and I woke up three days later finding out that I was in a coma and a type 1 diabetic. So I spent the rest of that week in intensive care and then going through, and eventually being released about a week or five days later. So fast forward now, nine years, here I am, speaking before you. I'm involved in the Flagler Youth Orchestra. I'm in my ninth year as a violist, my fourth year as a cellist. I'm at Florida Palm Coast High School in the I-3 New Tech Academy flagship. I'm also an ambassador for the I-3 Program, FPC. I'm also a part of the FPC Fire Leadership Academy. I also do ride-alongs with Palm Coast Fire Department two or three times a week, so if you see a bald guy with a green shirt on on a fire engine, it's most likely me. I'm also a Flagler County Sheriff's Office Explorer, and I also do ride-alongs with them. So, I'd just like to say thank you all for making this proclamation, bringing more awareness to this. Honestly, before the past few weeks, I had no idea November was even Diabetes Awareness Month. Being a diabetic, I should have known that. Shame on me. But anyway, thank you very much. This is awesome. This is an awesome idea and an awesome program that's getting started, because before, diabetes was more to the wayside, you could say. Not, not that it wasn't not there, but it was more to the wayside when it came to awareness. Of course, we have our major contributions like breast cancer awareness, or like No Shave November to support men's cancer. This was something that was more in, more in the hiding, and now it's being brought out. So I'd like to thank you. This is something that's pretty awesome, and you all should be proud of. This is something that's pretty awesome, and you all should be proud of what you've done.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. That's a fine example of our youth. That's awesome. From the Health Department, a few words.
Thank you.
Come. Yes.
We are so gratified to be associated with the Diabetes Alliance. My name is Bob Snyder. I'm the Administrator of the Health Department. For about a year now, our Director of Nurses, Bonnie Welter, right here. Bonnie has been planning a diabetic education and training program to formally help people manage their diabetes better. Our referrals will come from the many primary care physicians now affiliated with the Adventist Health System here in town. We're also going to be starting a medical nutritional therapy program, and where the biggest benefit's going to be is the Diabetes Prevention Program that we'll be starting as well. Our classes, individual and group classes, will be starting in January. We got a tremendous work plan to get this started, and we found funding, and we're ready to go. And we're just, again, so pleased to be associated with all these wonderful people in blue.
That's great. That's it? Anyone else? Well, as you look, you'll see this is a true alliance. We have government, we have private sector, we have the hospital, we have individuals. And this is just the start. Maybe next year, that we can come back, and instead of one day, we can make it a week or a month. So thank you all for what you've done, and thank you for your participation, and we can take pictures.
Yes, sounds good.
You good?
Okay, we're going to do a few different phones. One, two, three. Finally, one, two, three. Yes. All right, one, two, three. All right, we're going to get one, two, three. Let me get a couple. Ah, smiling. You guys are doing great. One, two, three, and maybe one more. Wow. Okay.
Yeah. We're working on it.
We're checking the LBC now.
They have to read the ordinance.
A problem? I need...
We're just making sure about one technical thing on this.
Okay, because I need him to read. Okay, we'll now move to Agenda Item Number Three, which is an ordinance.
Madam Mayor, I request that Item Five be moved forward. The applicant is here and, by coincidence, has to get to a flag football game tonight.
Okay, that's fine. Do I have consensus? Okay. I'll move to Agenda Item Number Five, which is an ordinance.
Yep. All set, Mayor?
Yep.
Okay, the title of this ordinance says, "This ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, providing for the Second Amendment to the Master Plan Development or MPD Development Agreement for the Palm Coast Park Master Plan Development or MPD." This ordinance allows for, is allowing multifamily uses on Track A and Track thirteen A and additional commercial uses on Track twenty-two. It provides for legislative findings and intent for severability for conflicts, and it provides for an effective date. This is a second reading of a quasi judicial matter, so if there have been any ex parte communications between, and after the first reading of this, those should be disclosed at this time, Madam Mayor.
Any ex parte? Okay.
Councilman Line, I believe that you had indicated you had a voting conflict at the...
I believe I do have a voting conflict on this, yes.
Right, so I just want to make sure that that continues on through this evening as well.
Aren't we going to pass it with two votes?
Well, that was why I was wandering around during that last process, was to make sure. Your charter says that any action taken by this council requires majority of a quorum.
Right.
We have a quorum. I was not a math major, but a majority should be too, so we're fine. I also checked with Ray Tyner, who's in...
I understand what you're saying.
We're good.
For it. Ew. I know, I know.
Vote for it, yeah.
Sorry.
Mayor, Council, this is the second reading of an ordinance related to the Palm Coast Park Master Plan Development Agreement. Since the second reading, there's been no new information or update. Staff is available for any questions, and the preview of the presentation, again, if you so choose, but at this time, there's no new information to bring forward.
Council, any questions or discussion on this item? Open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number Five, please do so at this time.
Hello, my name is Jeffrey Seib. I'm here tonight to present my concerns over the Palm Coast Park development plan for the western part of our city. Specifically, there are two concerns I want to address at this time. My first concern has to do with the land area or tracks of the Palm Coast Park development that are adjacent to the Agricultural Museum, Prince's Place, and Pelisser Creek. These are special places, and they deserve special consideration. The Palm Coast Park lands are on the east side of US One and south side of Old Kings Road, Tracks five B and five C, and on the west side of US One, the land area are tracks that are across from the Ag Museum and Prince's Place and go north to Pelisser Creek, an environmentally recognized waterway, Tracks seven V, eight, and nine. This area has always been rural, natural, and undisturbed, and to have homes and retail businesses bordering both places seems out of place. There needs to be some amount, larger rather than smaller, of an enhanced, natural, undeveloped buffer or setback on these tracks that will distinctively separate these historically and environmentally significant locations from development. My second concern arises from a review of the future land use map of the Palm Coast Park development, which shows a large amount of wetlands present, including Hewlett Swamp, which is a tributary of Pelisser Creek. It appears that perhaps a quarter to a third or more of the landmass involved in Palm Coast Park development is wetlands, and to shoehorn four thousand homes and commercial and industrial developments may cause extensive damage to this very important ecosystem resource. The Palm Coast Park wetlands provide water storage and aquifer recharge for city well fields and flood protection from storm surge during hurricanes and other major weather events. These wetlands support a highly productive and diverse community of life, so productive that so-called apex animals exist on, in, and over the wetlands and Palm Coast Park development. I'm referring to the eagle, alligator, and black bear. So as our local city government that is here for us, the people of Palm Coast, I ask you now, as a condition of approval of any request from Palm Coast Park, to first, have the developer add an enhanced natural buffer or setback to the tracks adjoining the Ag Museum, Prince's Place, and Pelisser Creek, and second, the developer save and not mitigate the many wetlands found on the Palm Coast Park property.
Thank you.
That's it, so...
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Celia Puglisi in Palm Coast. I was wondering also, thank you for letting me speak, I was wondering also about this Palm Coast Park. I know Prince's Place, Pelisser Creek, and the Agricultural Museum, which I have friends there, that border horses. I know it's a beautiful area, and a very extensive development has to be done with a lot of care. I haven't learned of this before. And I know development is going to take place, but I hope it's done with the common sense of preserving those areas, which, you know, we have lowlands in Palm Coast and all over Florida, and there are these wetlands that are basic for when we have storms where the water is supposed to go. And we have a lot of wildlife in that area, I know, and it's very pristine the way it is. So I don't think that we can stop development, but there should be development with a common sense and the preservation of our wildlife and our quality of life. We all know Prince's Place, Agricultural Museum, and all that area, and it's beautiful, and it should be preserved, so this development should be taken with the most care, and I understand this gentleman knows more than I do, the one that spoke before. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you for comments. Next speaker. You know, and I'll close, public comment, take it back to this council. Two points were made, so can you speak to the process?
If I can start off first by, this is an amendment to an existing development order, so this development was originally approved in two thousand and eleven through a very comprehensive development review process, involved a host of federal, state agencies reviewing every aspect of development. So what you have in front of you tonight is a change to that development plan, so I want to clarify that. And then as far as the details of the changes and the buffers, I'll ask Ray, and maybe the applicant may want to add to that discussion as well.
Yeah, just, and also too, this was a development of regional impact, so without me getting long-winded, prior to two thousand and seven, around the time around two thousand and three, two thousand and four, there was a lot of work involved, the Florida Fish and Wildlife, the Department of Environmental Protection, the Historical Preservation Officer, the St. John's River Water Management District, all of your environmental agencies have collectively got together and looked at this project prior to approval with the development of regional impact. It was mentioned about Pelisser Creek. This isn't a budding Pelisser Creek. However, during the DRI process, the original developer actually donated, and I can't remember the acreage, but it was a lot of acres to the north that is associated with the old Hewlett Sawmill that is connected to the Ag Museum. Actually, that property was actually donated to the Ag Museum as part of that preservation process. It was also used for a gopher tortoise relocation zone, is very favorable for gopher tortoises. So all that was with the buffers to Pelisser Creek, that land was donated during the early process with the approval from the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, St. John's River Water Management District. And in addition, if you, if we were to look at our conservation flume, our future land use map, all of the wetlands and the major wetland systems as part of the Palm Coast Park were delineated in our place in our conservation flume. As part of this development agreement and as part of future development agreements, those areas cannot be impacted. So all of those environmental concerns has been taken care of, not just by the City of Palm Coast, but all of the other agencies that have that expertise in that. Now, this amendment is not increasing any entitlements, it's not increasing any impervious or purvious area, it is not making a change to any of those environmentally sensitive areas that were previously approved. So hopefully that clears up some of the audience, some of the background that they might have not heard before.
Council, any questions or comments?
Just can you refresh me on which tracks are affected by this amendment?
If you can bring up the slides on the tracks.
Would be Tables four point one and four point two, which reference Tracks A, thirteen A, and twenty-two.
If you can just give an overview of the changes, guys?
Yep. Okay, what we're doing is on Track six A, seven A, and D of Track, Track D of Track twenty, it's going from residential medium to residential low, so it's basically saying that it's going to be single-family instead of single-family or multifamily. Track nine, I'm sorry, Lot nine of Track eighteen is going from flex uses, which would allow a variety of uses, to just industrial. And then Track A is going from public to flex uses. And so a lot of the reason that these uses are changing, or we're adding additional uses, is to allow more flexibility. Where we had a sports area designated on Track A, it would now be enlarged and go up to the area of Tracks eighteen and twenty. Additionally, I think we could see on the previous slide, we would be amending Track twenty-two, there's a slight change over there, that's the one on the west side of Bel Air. It's going from neighborhood commercial. The only change is neighborhood commercial allows a convenience store with up to eight vehicle fueling positions. They are getting four extra vehicle fueling positions, and the accessory restaurant would have slightly higher percentage of the total building area than if it was just Comp One. So it's pretty minor. The purchaser of that property wants to build a facility very similar to what's at Pine Lakes and Winfield Drive. And on Track thirteen A, that's a commercial and office area, that would be, we would be adding multifamily uses there, so it can be more like mixed use.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. Is that answered?
Yeah, the area in question, brought in question by the resident is up north of five B and eight, to the east of five C and five D, correct?
Yes.
Up north of Pelisser Creek and...
Yep, and what you have there, so this is, these are tracks that he was concerned about. This is Old Kings Road.
Right.
So, you know, this is Prince's Place Preserve in this area. So there is no change in this area. This is slated for, you know, potential future residential development with a potential park site in the middle. The area to the north here is... I guess we're off the screen. Off the screen, to the very north is the track that they donated and made it as conservation. That buffers the Pelisser Creek. And then we have, which wasn't mentioned, was you have Hewlett Branch that runs in about that area, and we have a very large conservation flume area protecting that system. As a matter of fact, some of our development that are going through preliminary plats right now are going to even... right now are going to even add a conservation easement to the majority, that would even give it more protection than it has.
Thank you. Answers.
Any other questions or comments?
My only, my only comment would be that, um, as staff has explained, um, a lot of these areas west of U S one were entitled many, well, now, many, many years ago by the, by the, uh, standards of Palm Coast, so, uh, certainly I encourage residents who are concerned about development and so forth to understand what the D R I process is and what projects are out there. I, I got a call earlier this week from a resident had nothing to do with this agenda item, but was questioning what was happening much further south than this in an area that's, uh, known as Nioga Lakes. And for most of us, it's just wilderness. The last time I was out there, it was on fire and we were getting ready to evacuate Flagler County. But, um, there will be big changes coming in the years to come, so I think it behooves all of us to be informed. But as to these changes here tonight, I think staff has adequately addressed the residents' concerns, and I would move approval of the proposed amendments.
Mayor, you're gonna need to pass the gavel to second. You need to pass it to Councilmember Lyon.
I, I will second that.
He can chair the meeting, he can't vote on it. Um, so now that you've passed the gavel, you can second the motion. Under your council rules and procedures, that would be the appropriate process.
And do I call for any other? I'm gonna just call for, uh, vote.
Yeah.
Call for vote on the, on the measure? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass it.
Councilmember Lyon, that is officially your fifteen seconds of fame.
Okay, now, we'll now move to agenda item number three, um, which is an ordinance.
Yes, Mayor, this is an ordinance of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, amending the city's Unified Land Development Code, repealing or replacing Chapter Nine, uh, engineering, design, utilities to clarify intent and to reflect current and development trends, providing for severability, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date.
Mayor and council, uh, this is the second reading of an ordinance. We have nothing, uh, since the first reading. Uh, this is an ordinance to incorporate both federal and state, uh, regulations related to stormwater and best management practices into our code. This is the first of two ordinances, uh, but this affects Chapter Nine, and staff is available for any questions, uh, but no presentation plan.
Counsel, any questions or comments for staff at this time?
No questions.
I'll open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on agenda item number three, please do so at this time. You know when I'll close, public comment, I'll take it back to this council. Entertain a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, passes unanimously. Agenda item number four, which is an ordinance.
Mayor, council, the title of this ordinance, this is an ordinance of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, amending the city's Code of Ordinances, Chapter Twenty-four, Environment, Article Two, Pollution Control, Division Two, Erosion Control, and Article Roman numeral six, Prohibition of Discharges, to align with amendments to Chapter Nine of the U L D C, providing for severability, codification, providing for conflicts, and an effective date.
Mayor, council, this is the other half of that action related to our national permit related to stormwater, and so it simply incorporates both federal and state best management practices and guidelines into our code. We have nothing further, this is the second reading, no comment or changes since the first reading.
Counsel, any questions or comments on this item?
No.
Open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on agenda item number four, please do so at this time.
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. Sometimes when I look at things and how they're being changed, I question some, some of the reasons for it's being changed. Um, and on, uh, twenty-four, two oh four, uh, paragraph A, it says, "To ensure that the water and water bodies are not polluted or degraded and are adequately protected and preserved," and it was changed to prevent or reduce pollutants. It seems to me that we're losing some form of, uh, consistency on, on what's, how much protection we're actually getting when we go from insure to prevent or reduce. Also, under, uh, the same, same, uh, paragraph, tw- uh, section twenty-four dash two oh four, uh, under, um, the little paragraph O, uh, th- they remove unreasonable interference with enjoyment of life or property, and I don't see anything else that, uh, guarantees us that. And I would just like more clarification on that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker. See, you know when I'll close, public comment?
I, so, sure.
Can you address the concerns of Mr. Carr, please?
Sure, I'm, I'm guessing I'll let, uh, staff confirm that the, these are definitions. So best management practices definition is probably what's consistent with federal and state law, so part of our requirement for our permit. And then as far as the, uh, the verbiage, um, that the citizen stated, my guess is that's very hard to define, whereas we got more precise in what it means to have, uh, a discharge, um, that's gonna hurt the environment. So, Mr. Peel, you have anything to add, or am I on point for that?
That, that sounds exactly right, and, and part of this was to ensure that these definitions were consistent throughout the development code.
Counsel, any questions or comments? Motion?
Uh, move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda item number six is an ordinance.
Mayor, council, this is an ordinance, first reading, an ordinance to the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, for the voluntary contraction or deannexation of the city boundary by contracting seventy-five acres, more or less, of real property, known as O, um, O A R E, I don't know how to pronounce that, Associates LLC, property generally located south of State Road, um, one hundred and west of Bel Air Boulevard, more particularly and legally described on exhibit H of the ordinance. The ordinance provides for amendment of the city boundaries, for severability, conflicts, and provides for an effective date.
Mayor, council, this is a first reading of a contraction from our city, uh, boundaries, and so, uh, in looking at this request, uh, we always evaluate, you know, how the property's gonna be served by city services. Uh, for this property owner, they'll mainly be served both from, uh, transportation, water, and sewer service from a different jurisdiction. So, uh, entertaining this request, you'll see the map that Ray has pulled up, it's, uh, on the westernmost part of the city boundary, just south of State Road one hundred. Um, obviously, that's gonna be more, uh, contiguous, uh, to Bell, Benell, and probably served better by, uh, their utilities. And so, uh, in our request, we agreed to contract parcel A, leaving behind parcel B in the city boundary to provide, provide a buffer for the neighborhoods, uh, from future development. And so, uh, staff is, uh, recommending approval of this request, as it really doesn't make sense, um, that this property will be served by city services in the future. So for us, it's a, a matter of logical, uh, rational basis for, uh, whether it should be in the City of Palm Coast, and we did, uh, provide for the future buffer, uh, for those neighbors to the east of this property.
Buffer? How big is the buffer?
Uh, Ray, can you answer that question, how big the buffer is?
Uh, parcel B is, uh, six, about six acres.
And what's the property's owned for? Is this a commercial space?
Commercial. Yes.
Any questions? Open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on agenda item number six, please do so at this time.
Good evening, Mr. Neilbach, Palm Coast. Is this the property that we've been discussing about what the last six meetings or so ago? That we're giving the county the property on the airport? Is this a different one?
It's a different one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Seeing none, I'll close, public comment. Take it back to this council. Entertain a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. We'll now move to the consent agenda. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on agenda item number seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, or fifteen, please do so at this time.
Mayor, I would like to ask that number nine be removed from the consent agenda.
Sure. Go ahead. Which item?
My name is Celia, again, and I want... Which item? And the, um, cultural grants.
Yeah, we, that was just polled, so you'll have a time to speak to it.
Ah, ah, okay, well, I didn't, I misunderstood.
No, 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 it's okay. Uh, it's, it's very rare that we do this, so that's fine. Um, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus agenda item number nine, which will be discussed.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda item number nine is a resolution approving the cultural arts grants for F Y two thousand nineteen. Councilmember Lyon.
Yes, um, I have a concern that I voiced at the workshop, and I was hoping that someone would come forward with some clarification or, uh, addressing it, but it specifically was with the request from the, um, Palm Coast United Methodist Church Concert Series. I have three issues of concern actually with their application. The first most spoke on was that the, uh, application describes it as an outreach ministry. They use the phrase multiple times in their application, and, uh, all of my inquiries into what that term means, um, defines it as, uh, proselytization to spread the gospel, and I believe that it, in my opinion, it is a violation of the Constitution for us to be spending, uh, taxpayer money for any evangel- evangelical mission. Uh, it is, it's difficult for me to, to ma- well, I'll just quickly jump. The other two issues I have is it says addressing challenges in the field of access, but doesn't give any indication of how those, what, what's being done to address those access issues. And then the reference to the, the fact that their entertainment, or their, their product, uh, project goes, uh, to one quarter of their seats or to the host church, and I don't know if that is saying that it is designed that way or if that was their history. So are they actually open to the public, or are they limited to only some seats to the public and some to their church members? So, uh, with those, I would like that, I, I, it's hard for me to do this because, uh, I like all of the things that they are doing. I will personally contribute and, and support their, uh, their concert series, uh, but I don't believe the tax money should be spent for it, so I would ask that the, uh, this particular application be denied and the others, I'm fine with.
Councilmember, uh, Vice Mayor Cuff, do you have anything to add to the discussion?
Um, no. I, I, well, yes, I, um, I, I certainly can appreciate, uh, Councilmember Lyons' concerns, um, and I'm not sure whether this is historically how the application from the United Methodist Church has been framed. I know this is a concert series that's been going on for a number of years, and despite the fact that it takes place in a church, or at least a church hall, I certainly never considered it, um, to be anything other than a community, uh, service, an opportunity for members of the public to attend these concerts and hear some good music. Uh, I, you know, I'm certainly, uh, think we need to be cautious about any entanglement of church and state, but, um, I, you know, ma- and maybe it's my background in another church just up the road, but I don't necessarily consider the phrase outreach ministry to be proselyt- proselytizing, uh, the community. I mean, what I think most, at least mainline denomination churches, I won't speak for everybody, mean when they use that phrase these days is what some people would call rice bowl ministry, which is providing something to the citizens and to the community that the, the organization thinks would be a benefit, and not a situation where they say, "Here, I'll give you this ticket for this concert, but let me tell you about your Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ." Um, at least that's how I understand. It's not done, uh, s- in, in the case of the, these, this concert series. So, while I can certainly appreciate the concern of the council member, I, uh, I would not support denying the grant this year on those grounds and, uh, suggest maybe that in the future, if this organization is gonna continue to apply, as I believe they have done for a number of years, that our leisure services department, uh, you know, express our concern about making sure we stay away from any, um, hint of promoting any particular religion, even ones we agree with, and, uh, perhaps, uh, rephrase the application for future years, but not deny them the money for this year.
We'll open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to speak on agenda item number nine, please do so at this time.
My name is Celia Publis from Palm Coast, and, uh, I appreciate, uh, Mr. Cuff, uh, Consumer Cuff's suggestion. I do appreciate the notice, the right notice of Mr. Lyon on the, on the wording, and maybe the wording can be changed, because I know discharge, doesn't matter that it's a charge, they hold beautiful concerts. And I really, uh, appreciate the city always, um, funding the, our culture in Palm Coast, our cultural events. They're very important, the same way that sports for our kids are, and I appreciate you supporting anything you can do for those people before they ask for the football, and I hope discharge can get because of the concerts they hold, they can change the, the incorrect wording, and they can be, uh, yeah, receiving the grant. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. We'll close, public comment. You know, I appreciate, uh, your, your statements, and, um, actually, I think it's, it's one that we, we need to be mindful of and recognize. We definitely do not want to get into a place where we're, um, you know, compromising the city certainly and, and, uh, going against our Constitution. So, um, I don't know, I was not part of the discussion during the workshop, but I, was there a legal rendering found from our city attorney? I know you're...
Councilmember Lyon is exactly correct. Councilmember Lyon is exactly correct. Excuse me. Uh, we need to be very cautious and concerned about, uh, spending, uh, public funds for what's obviously referred to in the Constitution as establishment, um, of a religion. Um, in this case, I, I, I would, um, suggest that the, the, the analysis that any court would, would undertake would be to look at the exact nature, um, of the use of the funds. Uh, not so much what they are referred to, but exactly, uh, how, how are the funds being spent? So it's a factual, it's really factually driven to, uh, as far as your decision this evening, whether or not it would be an appropriate use of government funds. And, uh, of course, I, uh, can only, um, rely on the record, which, what I've heard this evening, what we heard at the workshop was contain, containing your agenda item. Um, so it would appear to me that, uh, you know, certainly you have discretion in this matter, but it would seem that the, uh, the, the record could support this contribution based upon what is actually being, if, if there was, if this was being done, um, where it was part of a service, where there was a sermon attached to it, whether there was a, a request for, uh, uh, taking ties and offerings associated with this, that would give me more pause and more concern that it, that it was actually, uh, uh, u- using public funds to, uh, to help, uh, uh, fund and establish, uh, th- this church, this particular church. Um, f- but from what I have read in the application, it, it looks like this is, um, a, a, a concert series that just happened to be put on and, and conducted in a church. Certainly, it's, it's, uh, it's up, up to this council whether, whether they want to, uh, move forward with this, this funding, uh, but I, I, I do not see from a legal standpoint that, uh, uh, it would be subject to a successful challenge.
I'd make one more comment than, um, in light of the, the comments of fellow council members and, and our attorney, um, I'm prepared to support this. Uh, I hope though that the message is, is clear. I know their application stated that they were anticipating this money be used for their marketing materials, so, um, I'm sure that, that maybe they've, they'll make clear that their marketing materials are, uh, not, not crossing any lines. And, uh, but, but, yeah, I think that's something that we as a, as a government body need to be aware of, and I'll be able to, you know, I'll, I'll keep my eyes open for it, but at this point, based on the arguments presented, or the discussion presented today, I, I'm willing to support it.
And Mayor, I think the concerns expressed this evening and at the workshop by Councilmember Lyon are well-taken.
Yeah.
And something that we should, we should en- encourage, uh, the applicant, uh, to try to, uh, keep in mind.
So please make sure we follow up with that.
Yeah, we, we are definitely gonna take a, a hard look at our application guidance... Yeah, we, we are definitely gonna take a, a hard look at our application guidance and when we have the application workshop to handle that specific concern, um, in coming years.
Thank you. Okay, um, I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, move approval of item nine.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Public participation at the end of the meeting. If you've not, um, taken public participation at the beginning, now is your time. Uh, you have up to three minutes. Please state your name for the record and your three minutes will begin.
Hello again, Mr. Neilbuck, in, uh, our section. Mr. McDonald stated something about to the effect that, uh, the city's basically spending money that was water or with the DPW. Well, I saw the place, and it needs to be done, and I disagree with Mr. McDonald wholeheartedly on that one. Second question is the status of the one hundred issue with the county. We have a new city manager who doesn't hate the county executive, apparently. So I'd like to know what the status is and what are we gonna do about it so we get this thing going. The one hundred corridor needs more business. Florida Path, uh, Florida Park Drive meeting with the residents, haven't heard anything. Now, it's been quite a while. No, anything, so please, let's get the residents of Florida Park some kind of resolve of this issue. You have too many cars going. Slow the speed down, put in bumpers, uh, speed bumps, make it a one-way, whatever it is, let's have the residents get involved and come up, please, with a solution. And Mr. Lyon, thank you for serving this community in the interim. And same with, uh, Ms. Shipley. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Um, Beau, can you give an update on where we are with Airport Commons?
Sure. Do you want to do that now?
Oh, I, next speaker, sorry, I didn't see you coming up.
Louis McCarthy, Palm Coast. Last time, last business meeting I was here, and I spoke about not picking up yard waste at the appropriate time, which is Wednesdays. And you gave an award to, um, the company. And they came out and they did my block, and guess what? The rest of the blocks surrounding me in Pine Grove was not done for another two weeks. I think that you should have an inspect, or somebody to come around after them on a Wednesday, just to, just to check in areas, various areas, uh, to see whether they're picking up yard waste. Because I'm noticing, uh, you know, they vary. In Pine, in Pine, and I have to go to Pine Lakes for a reason, but I noticed that they veer off this time and then hit this place, and then hit that place, a- a- and it's, it's not, it not, not like it used to be where, where they would, on a Wednesday, they would go all out, all over and pick up. They're not doing that. I don't, I, I think probably it's a manpower thing and everything, but that's not my problem. My problem is that, uh, like a neighbor of mine said, you ha- you, you spoke before the city council and you got our block finished, and then everybody else suffered, and I don't want that. I just, you know, I, I think to keep them on their toes, I think it's best to have somebody or, or designated people to just say, "Hey, look, they didn't really come around here, and this stuff was put up before the day, and after the day is still there and everything, and it wasn't picked up." And I think, I think it can be done. I think, uh, it, it can be done by our, our people who are going around for different purposes. You know, once before, they used to have it where the, uh, uh, people who inspect buildings would also check to see things, minor things like that. I thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker. See, no one, I'll close public comment. Please update the State Road one hundred.
Sure, um, Airport Commons should be on your next agenda. Uh, we're in the final, final tweaks of an agreement, uh, to resolve those issues, uh, with both the county and the developer, so good, good progress on that. Um, if I can just address, um, the other item, uh, as far as the yard waste, uh, Mayor, oh, sorry.
I mean, I mean, we've, you know, we've had issues with Waste Pro. We've addressed those issues. There was, uh, an issue with, we're just picking up the garbage, um, uh, you know, if we have to hire somebody or use somebody internally to drive around to make sure that our contracting company is doing their job, then that's not the right company, so. Uh, we need to figure out if, if indeed they are picking up the yard waste, not just on Mr. McCarthy's street, but throughout the city, so let's have a report come back to us as far as what they are picking up, what they're not. Um, how many complaints we've received, 'cause I know we track those complaints, um, on yard waste, uh, so I'd like to hear a little bit more about that.
Sure, if, if I can just add to that as well, that any customer that feels that their pickup was missed, please call customer service nine eight six twenty-three sixty. Uh, we do find them. We look at videos on the truck of whether the pile was there or it wasn't there. Um, sometimes for the lar- larger piles, they use their cherry picker on a, a different day, but, uh, regardless, uh, it's hard to address the issue when we know about two weeks later, so I encourage residents to help us, um, manage this issue, and also we find them, so that tends to get their attention as well, but we'll have a discussion with Waste Pro and report back to city council. Thank you, Mayor.
Um, just to follow up, if I ever called, if I remember correctly, I read that, that tree, uh, that they don't remove all green, you know, it's, it's not everything, so if you have a tree that you've cut down and cut into logs, they're not gonna remove that, right? You had to make some different arrangements.
Right, there are limits, size limitations on the size of the pile and the limbs in the pile. There are also, if you have a commercial service come and take down a tree, we're gonna ask that your commercial company come and remove that tree, so. Um, yeah, I've seen some strange things in my neighborhood where they make the pile the whole front of their yard. They're not gonna pick that up. Um, you do have to help them out a little bit, so, but regardless, uh, call customer service and they can help you clarify and what best way to get, uh, Waste Pro to pick up, whether it's eligible for pickup, so. Um, you know, sometimes if you just call Waste Pro, we don't get notified, and so I would encourage you to start with customer service.
Okay, uh, we'll now move to discussion by city council of matters not on the agenda. Vice Mayor Cuff.
Of nothing for this evening, Mayor.
Councilmember Lyon.
Nothing for me.
And I have nothing. Discussion by city attorney of matters not on the agenda.
It's unanimous.
Discussion by city manager of matters not on the agenda.
One, one small thing, I, I wanna make sure, uh, both city council and residents are aware, uh, there's a lot of farewells, uh, tonight, but, uh, sorry, you have, uh, more work to be uh, to have, Mr. Lyon and Ms. Shipley, so November thirteenth and twentieth, uh, to dispose of any business that's brought up at the thirteenth. Uh, you do have several items on the thirteenth agenda, so some of them council priorities, Airport Commons, wrapping up, uh, you know, kind of a, an old issue, so, um, you still have, have a couple more meetings of work, uh, left, and then of course on November twentieth, at the end of the meeting, the new sou- city council will be seated, so, uh, with that, that's all I have, Mayor.
What, um, do we normally do for December?
Uh, depends on where the holidays fall. Um, I would encourage you, um, to, uh, probably cancel the meeting on December twenty-fifth, um, and the meeting on January first. They fall on Tuesdays this year, and that would probably be the only change, um,
That encouragement.
To, uh, your holiday schedule, um.
Well, yeah, so I, let, bring that back to us, 'cause I wanna see if there's a workshop, I just wanna get our calendars in order so we can let the public know, but we can make plans for the holidays as well.
Sure, I'm sure everyone would appreciate that.
Yeah, okay, perfect. Okay, um.
Move, we adjourn.